Flag salute please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for prayer, please, Mark.
We bow your heads, please, most holy and heavenly Father, we come before you ask for your blessings. We ask that you bless Bourbon County and all the citizens who reside in it. For all of our firefighters, our EMCs, our paramedics, for our police and our sheriff's department, for all of the workers who work tirelessly and hard for the benefit of all in Bourbon County. They are out in this weather and weather that is much worse than this. Lord, we thank you for all the wonderful gift that you provide us. And Lord, we ask for rain. We ask for rain for ourselves, for our community, for our country, and for all those who are in need of rain to help. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that you give each and every one of us every day. We ask these in Jesus' name.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome to Bourbon County Commission Meeting, September 11.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion? I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor, aye? I said Mr. Brad Macken, but I think we'll just take Mr. Matthew Wells as mayor. You're on the agenda next, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brad is recovering from surgery that he had, so he asked me to come in his stead. I'm here this evening to humbly request that you would waive the dump fees at the Bourbon County landfill for the disposal of-
I am sorry. Let me repeat that. Brad is recovering from the surgery from last week, so he asked me to come and be in his stead. I'm here this evening to humbly request that you waive the fees at the Bourbon County landfill for the disposal of the building that it says is owned by somebody who does not yet officially own it. I believe the name of the developer is actually Kendall Shonin Rock. It will be transferred over after that property is built and then it will be signed over. I believe he will actually continue to own it and rent it to the state. So, just wanted to make sure we didn't misrepresent that. This will be for the demolition of the building at Two South National.
So, this is privately owned at this time?
Yes.
And will be until the new building is erected?
Yes, sir.
At that time leased to the state?
Yes, sir.
Have any idea estimated tonnage?
No, sir.
Okay.
I do not.
I, uh... In, in, in fear of being rude, I'll just say no.
Well, let me-
I'm not gonna support-
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I, I, uh... There's two buildings, there's three buildings being demoed in Fort Scott right now downtown. We're not, we're not giving, we're not giving them free dump fees. So, I, I-
The city is taking it upon themselves to demolition this building as part of an in-kind donation to the state for the project to be located downtown. This will be a benefit to the city and to the county. It will increase the property taxes that you will be able to collect on that property.
I think that- Go ahead. I disagree. I respectfully disagree. That's your opinion. I seriously doubt that's a fact, so-
That the property taxes will go up on the new building?
That it's a benefit for downtown. I wouldn't tend to say that it's a negative for downtown.
Even though it's bringing in thirty to forty jobs to the downtown area? They are located in Fort Scott currently, but they are not located downtown.
Let's not say they're new, because that's what I've heard. It's been said that they're new jobs. They're not new jobs. They're already jobs in Fort Scott, correct?
Some of them, yes, are already here in town and they will be moved to downtown.
My point is, as a commissioner, I am not here to use taxpayer dollars to support private businesses. So, that's my answer.
I appreciate the city's efforts, of course, but here's my concern. And I know you're standing there in good faith, wanting to do the right thing for Fort Scott, Bourbon County. But my concern is, we're gonna set a precedent here. We do it for you, how do we tell the next person no and the next person no? I mean, there will be no end, because in all fairness, Mayor, if we say yes, how do we say no to the next one? And it's gonna come, because if I was the next one, I would come.
I would say, personally, I would say you as commissioners at the city open floodgates. I will recommend to the people that I'm working for now to come and ask the same thing.
Yeah. So, and he's the no, so there's no reason me making a motion, because it's gonna die like a second, so... You're more welcome to come back when the third commissioner's here, if you'd like. I don't really know if it will change anything. But again, my concern would be us setting standards for the next person next month. And as he mentioned, other people are doing demolition downtown, other private owners. They haven't made any requests, so-
I think they should now. If I was them, I would be requesting the city to pay.
Well, if they're gonna bring in a benefit of a multimillion dollar new building and up to thirty to forty new jobs for the downtown area-
It's not thirty to forty new jobs, see, don't misrepresent it.
To the downtown area. And I, I, I believe if you'll listen to what I say, Mr. Commissioner, you will hear the words that come out of my mouth and not implant words that you think that I'm saying or that other people have thought that I heard.
Okay, thank you. The answer tonight's no.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, let us do one. I don't think it's gonna change the no, and, and right now, I'm a no, even though I do anything I could help you folks, but I'm afraid of what standards we're gonna be setting here, uh, what's coming next, because if I owned a house, I'm wanting to build a new house, and I would put in six carpenters and plumbers in there, I would ask the county to waive the dump fees, because I'm putting six carpenters to work. So, I mean, it's kinda, it's a smaller scale, but it's, it kinda has the same look to it, so we gotta be careful here, so. Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you both for your consideration. God bless you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Public comment, do we have anybody on the list?
Ann.
Andair's on the list?
Andair's on the list.
Yeah, I don't know where I'll get, 'cause soon he's on here, so anyway. Yes, my name is Andair.
And the red light's on?
Yes, red light is on.
We're ready.
I rarely look through the financials, 'cause they're long and tedious. But I did scroll down a few. And just wondering if there was any, any way you could answer to, and you may not be able to, that's okay. On page twelve, um, the county paid four different law offices for services. Can you explain as, what, what that? I don't understand.
Well, the one I'm aware of, the sheriff's department has one in Kansas City on fees all the time. And we pay the ones upstairs that's appointed by the judge, and we have to pay the lawyer fees. So, you'll see different ones-
Four different ones?
Yeah, then it's- Different attorneys appointed by the judge to represent someone that doesn't have an attorney, so yes, we have to pay the bill.
Okay, I got it. All right, and I kind of, once I thought about it a little bit, I thought, well, this might be the case. Page sixteen, payment was made to Ready, Bourbon County Ready, and I do not remember if it was said, and what is the proposed payment to Ready for next year?
Zero at this point.
Zero at this point?
We put that money in a contingency fund and we'll discuss it early next year.
Okay.
And we fund them, we haven't voted on it, there's no funding ready twenty twenty-four at this time.
Okay, all right. On page seventeen, um, there is an account, uh, oh, gosh, I should've written it down. I would, I would respectfully ask that you rename that account. It's, uh, for the, it's either to, well, it says Meals on Wheels, that's what it says. So, I guess without, and we have gone around and around and around and around this tree, trying to understand the two separate entities and what they do. If Meals on Wheels means Southeast Kansas area agency on aging, please change that, man, ladies. If that's who that payment is going to, that's what I would like to see on there. Because they're the ones providing the meals and, and not get confused with, uh, those meals come from Pittsburgh, they're prepared in Pittsburgh, they come to our Bourbon County Senior Center, and then, um, drivers meet there to pick those meals up, to disperse them. So, um, I did not see, oh, that's probably, I don't know, I did not see a payment, maybe I didn't scroll down far enough, to the Bourbon County Senior Center, so-
Bourbon County who, ma'am?
Senior Center, to the center themselves. And so, I don't know, I'll, I'll do some more digging, but that would be my request, just so that it's clear to everyone.
I believe it's split, this-
Yes, it is split. I mean, you guys have talked about that, and yes-
Yeah, I didn't see the payment to Bourbon County either, so I don't know where it's at in that document.
Right, right, okay, all right.
But it's supposed to be there.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Ann.
So, Michael.
Ms. Brennan thought she'd sign up to speak, but the list is already taken back to yours, so she's on the list.
That's fine. She signed the wrong one, she can't talk. I'm just kidding.
You know the rules.
You can't, yeah.
I'm giving you the floor.
He will get you in trouble. Good evening.
Well, and I think I heard your interesting comments last time, that prompted me to come. And one of the comments said was that we hadn't provided you any information, and we have, and I brought the corrected, I had passed out a wrong thing, that our meals, we, almost seventy thousand dollars in meals that we have provided and fifteen thousand meal, over fifteen thousand meals, and that's just-
Hot meals.
Hot meals, well, and overall, we provide an array of services and a quarter of a million dollars is just the amount we can capture that we have provided to Bourbon County. And I just wanna make that clear, and if someone has a complaint or just, or a problem with the services, I'm the executive director, I will take their calls, I will address it. We want to provide a quality service. I don't know where the frozen meals is coming from, it's a hot meal. We do provide one package of frozen meals, seven-day package per month, that is actually not reimbursed to us, 'cause we're reimbursed for four meals a week, but we do this additional box, which honestly, we're gonna, we're looking at not doing it, because we can't afford it any longer. But, um, we're gonna do that on a case-by-case basis, but I, I'm not a frozen meal lover, but those are very nice frozen meals, but there are other Meals on Wheels providers, so I don't know if his mother is getting those frozen meals from another provider. That's why we really try to call ourselves sixty-plus nutrition, not Meals on Wheels, 'cause that is a very generic term, and there's multiple agencies. You can get frozen meals through your Medicaid provider that are not associated with us. But again, I just, you know, if someone has a complaint, I would please call me, you know, and I brought the updated, if you want the updated, um, version, and I, and do you have any questions for me?
No, uh, as you know, we have asked to put a board member on this group to represent us, and we'll, maybe we'll get more feedback, we hope, but-
Well, do you have a board member in, on our-
Yeah.
Selecting it as our board member?
Yeah, on them.
But, but not on the other one?
Not on the other one.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
And we want everyone to work together happily.
Yes, absolutely.
And what is your phone number, ma'am?
Six-two-zero, four-three-one, two-nine-eight-zero.
Thank you.
But I, I think one thing, Kathy, that you probably, I probably should add your stamp there, but it's fine. I, I thought you gave a great presentation last time, so I don't know where that came from, but anyway. And people, you know, they might not have been here or whatever, who knows? And I had the numbers at that time. About the twenty-five thousand dollars or so, give or take, that you get turns into, I thought it was closer to ten hundred ninety thousand, but dollars worth of services. So, I think people need to understand you provide more than just meals.
Absolutely.
Meals would be a very small part of actually what you actually provide. So, I also would like to point out that people seem to think that you, these programs, such as yours or Bourbon County or any such type programs are just flush with money, that the government just gives them all kinds of money and they have a never-ending supply of ability to do whatever. That is simply not true. I think, um, being, working with elderly as I have myself, or I don't anymore, just in fairness, I do not in the Southeast Kansas, um, but did for ten years. People, I think, had a misconception that there was all these wonderful programs out there. They may be by name, but our wonderful federal government and state government does not fund them to the level they're supposed to. I mean, I can kinda go back to the LA VTR, is that saying that right, Michael? You know, we can talk about it, it's there, but it's not funded. It's no different than a lot of these programs, um, and not just yours, but multiple programs out there, whether it's, um, well, DCF, he just talked about, or the elder abuse and all of that things, they are not funded to any level of, uh, of sustainability whatsoever. And so, I think people need to understand that you're, you're, you're turning pennies into, into hundred-dollar bills.
It is a requirement of the program to go out and seek donations, so they, it's underfunded kinda deliberately, and it's the donations, I mean, I don't think we've done a good job letting people know that. I mean, I think people think this is a free meal. We don't have to charge for the meal, but it is not free. We pay for food, we pay for gas, and we pay for staff. And as the conversation, the, our board graciously agreed to raise our minimum wage of our drivers to ten dollars an hour, just so we can get people in the door to work. And that, that's gonna put us in a deficit if we don't offset it with donations.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think that's important, people to know.
I appreciate that.
You don't just, you don't, you don't just, you don't have a golden spigot with the state or feds. And, and I, and I, honest, people really think you do. And, I mean, not just you, I'm saying you, but I'm, services like yours, people think just has a never-ending supply of money, and it just simply isn't true. And, um-
Yeah, we're lucky we had ARPA funds to backfill the, the deficits that we had. Our nutrition program was three hundred thousand in the hole, and we were able to cover that with ARPA funds, but we don't have those funds this year. And the state of Kansas has graciously given, um, our meal program statewide a million dollars, so that will kinda break us even, but then we raise minimum wages.
Let's clarify what you just said, a million dollars statewide?
Yes.
Yeah, statewide.
Statewide.
Not countywide, not Southeast Kansas, statewide. Now, how far is a million dollars statewide gonna go?
Yeah, for all the counties in Kansas.
Again, I'm gonna say the state of Kansas should be ashamed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
I'm not gonna speak anymore on this, because, uh-
Well, you guys can-
If you're putting any of what you said to me, it's not true. I'll tell you what he says, it's not true. I did not say anything about you having an endless flow of money.
I'm not, I didn't, did I say you? You're getting negative, you're getting defensive, I had nothing to do with it. I said I've worked in Southeast Kansas for ten years, and I've been around multiple people that said that, so-
Yeah, but who do you get emails from that say that I spoke about Meals on Wheels?
I saw it. We saw it in the last meeting.
Yeah, and it was me?
Yes.
Okay. But I, but I've never said they've been flushed with cash.
Did I say you said that?
No.
Did I say you said that?
No, you, you very carefully said, I did, but I just wanna make sure.
Is he on the list?
Can he sit down?
Is he on the list?
Oh, well, I think-
Michael, Michael.
You can, Michael, you can talk about what you want.
Yeah, let me talk about what I wanna talk about, okay?
It's not all about you.
It is, again, our, uh, birthday for our constitution, and I would like to give you a new copy, because-
Thank you.
Very possibly, the Fourteenth Amendment's gonna get dog-eared here in the next little while. And these are from the Sandra Day O'Connor School of Law, which I know about, on this.
One thing I wanna bring, another issue in the newspaper that I'd like to bring to your attention, on the back page here, under the public notices. If you read this, they're going to raise our water rates three percent per annum into perpetuity. And they've craftily written it where it says, "All customers of the Fort Scott Water Department." Well, guess who's the customer of the Fort Scott Water Department? Rural Water. So, these are going to be three percent per year into perpetuity, rate increases on everybody in Bourbon County.
That's not true.
Okay, then who, where, who gets their water?
My water comes, does not come from Fort Scott, so I promise you it doesn't.
Okay, everybody that I said on Rural Water, it's some Rural Water, whoever gets it from Fort Scott.
I'm on Rural Water, but-
Do they get it from Fort Scott?
No, I don't. So, not everybody in Bourbon County gets Rural Water from Fort Scott.
So, correct. But I'll say, majority of people in Bourbon County get their water from Fort Scott. I would-
True, neither.
You can, uh, challenge me on that one. The other thing that I-
I've lived here for fifty years, I'm not sure, I guess I don't know anything.
No, I'm, I'm excluding you, you're lucky, you're, it's not going up.
When you turn a faucet on, it doesn't matter at the end of the day, you're gonna pay somebody for water.
Understood, but I-
I'm thankful I have water, thank you.
A rate into perpetuity is about like this sales tax that we have of this county, city, that was written into perpetuity, and it's not legal to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I have one more, just real, one more quick one.
Okay, I thought you was walking off.
No, I got one more quick one. Last week at the city, they are condemning a, a lady's property that is in the county, because her county property, she has some city property that joins the county property, and they're saying that they can condemn it, just because it's adjoining. I think that should be something that's looked into as well. I have the two plats right here.
The tax on one, one of them says manufactured home, and the other one says a vacant lot.
I have no idea, I know what you're talking about, but I've been told it's like half and half or something. Does that treat to that?
There was a estimation, before the Google map changed, that fifty-one percent of her manufactured home was in the city. Well, I can't imagine with twelve acres, who's eight on one and four on the other, why you would do that, but... Needs to be looked into, and I have a, some, a comparison property that could be looked at, it's treated a little bit different, but-
Thank you.
Thank you. That it, Captain, Park Public?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Department updates, Public Works, please. Hello, Eric.
Good evening. First one, whoa, breaking things, first one will be the, uh, monthly culvert report.
We were signing those, were we? I thought we quit signing them.
No, we have to, once a month. All right. Kinda give you an update where we're at with our chip and seal. We've completed six miles or twelve lane miles, um, we're down to Soldier Road. I know at the last meeting, I said that we, our machine was broke, which our machine was broke, but reached out to Lynn County and they were gracious enough to let us borrow their machine, so I wanna really thank them for working with us and allowing us to do that, or otherwise, we wouldn't have got any chip and seal done this year, so, uh, we're evaluating the budget, see where we're at, and, uh, figure out whether we're gonna do more chip and seal or go to asphalt, or exactly what budget's gonna allow to do. Do wanna keep in mind, fuel prices are, are up and they're going up, so that's, uh, that's a big influencer with us, so...
And also, let you know this, winter's coming.
Winter is coming, it is coming.
It's coming, like it or not, it's coming.
Very much, very much, so, um, but anyhow, that's kinda where we're at on that.
Okay.
Do have some good news, uh, we applied for a off-system bridge, put in two applications, and we were accepted for one of them, we were one of twenty. Out of, there was eighty applications and we were one of twenty for a bridge at Sixtieth and Grand. Overall, estimated cost would be nine, one hundred and sixteen thousand, our share would be seventy-five, so, if you guys-
That's in District One.
I know.
Well, I didn't mean that as a bad thing.
Okay, okay.
I didn't mean that as a bad, I didn't-
Seventy-five thousand or seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five thousand.
Okay, very good.
Yep, correct, that's great, yep.
That's, that's, well, that's a pretty good deal for Bourbon County.
Yes, it is, so this will be our second, second, uh, grant that we've been awarded now through this.
Need a motion?
Yeah, I probably should, and have you guys sign, and, uh, then we can, better yet, let me take, get this to the proper people to make sure we sign it properly, so we don't have to redo it. But I do need a motion, or if you wanna wait till next meeting?
Whatever you need.
Let's wait till the next one, that way I'll have the proper-
Okay.
Because it says title here and not signature, and I wanna make sure we do everything correct for the state.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, bad news on that, our bridge on, uh, Jayhawk between one hundred ninety-fifth and two hundred and fifth was not selected, and then on the KLBIP, the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program, the bridge at two hundred and fifteenth over the railroad tracks, two hundred and fifteenth and Valley, was not selected either, so, uh, but we did get one selection, so-
Try and try again.
That's right, that is right. And then, last thing I got, hauling rock, just let you know, we have two belly dumps hauling now, so, um, moving the rock, mowing ditches, cleaning ditches, and sidearm mowing, so-
Good, thank you.
We're, uh, we're moving, so-
Crusher up and going good?
It's, it's up. They're coming down tomorrow to be able to tie the cone crusher into our crusher, and we will have- Yeah, we'll have two crushers going, so we can really get some chips on the ground, so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if your loader can keep up.
Well, we're gonna try.
We hope so, yeah.
Yeah, so, anything for me.
I don't have anything. I know you're mowing, thank you, and I've seen the rock truck movement, so thank you for that, too, so-
Okay.
I don't have anything.
All right.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
I need to step outside one second.
Yeah, I need to take this call.
About a three-minute break.
In fact, the rock has so much dust in it, it's like driving in the fog when you're following someone.
Yes, it is.
Trustee's for it.
Look, we did maybe talk about, yeah, about you once you read it.
Sorry about that, that's my grandson, and my grandson calls, the world stops, folks. For me, anyway, not for anybody else, but just for me. Okay, EMS, fourth, uh, Walmart grand-
We got an appointment at Marmerton Township Clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm-
You skipped one.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm getting in a hurry here.
Kristen Duffy has resigned as Marmerton Township Clerk, since she's moving out of state. The township board has met, sent a letter recommending Deborah Duffy to fill Kristen's term. They just need a motion appointing Deborah Duffy to Marmerton Township Clerk.
Make a motion to appoint Deborah Duffy to Marmerton Township Clerk, per their request.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor, aye? Thank you. Now we're moving on, EMS. Good evening.
So, I had a conversation with Jim on Friday, and he asked me to come by. I could know this, you wanna know this? Remember last year, I bought it for a gram from Walmart, and they gave us four thousand dollars and we set up an exercise room at EMS station. Um, whenever she handed us the check, she said, "Be sure and apply for it again, 'cause I wanna keep our money local." And we did. And we did. And we found out a couple of weeks ago, we got another $4,000.
Great.
Which we got last week, and we've already spent. The furniture in our dayroom consisted of a sofa that was in the surgery lounge at the hospital, three recliners, actually four recliners, that were patient room recliners. So, we went through a place called Firehouse Furniture, that builds furniture specifically for fire in this. We got a sofa, three recliners, two end tables, and a coffee table.
Congratulations. Now you're comfortable.
And thanks to Rob Harrington, Bourbon County ready, they were instrumental in helping get all the paperwork and everything done.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, I just gave Jim, I think I left you a coffee tip, but in our run-up, it was total. And that is affecting the last day of August this year. And if you look back last year, that would be sixty runs more this year than it did last year.
If I want a copy of this, this is the runs this year for EMS.
Are we doing on the, what do they call it, the...
Fill bridge?
Yeah, Logan machines, or the...
Lucas devices.
Lucas devices.
We have both of those, and...
You got both?
Yeah, we got both, and there's...
I've seen those on TV recently.
Well, thank you very much for applying the grant, and thank Rob Harrington for helping you, and I hope you're comfortable out there.
Thanks, thanks, John. Is Justin here?
Marmerton massacre, is it Justin?
Oh, Marmerton massacre, forgot about that one.
Hi, Terry. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
I come to you tonight regarding the Marmerton massacre. Before we had provided standby for them, we were under the city. The city did not charge for our standby services, because they felt, we were doing, Frank was providing something for the city, so...
Sure.
So, I'm asking you all, if you want to agree to continue the same, or do you want me to go ahead and bill them our hourly rate of $75?
I mean, no, I don't think we, I mean, we bill somebody for standing by, I don't...
Yeah.
I mean, we stand by football games, don't we?
We do, yeah. I agree with Clifton, that's really a big event for Fort Scott slash Bourbon County.
And I'm completely fine with that, I just wanted...
I think that's great that you do that, so...
We do bill for football games. So... Yeah, that's true, I heard, I heard somebody say that, it's a different taxing district.
We probably shouldn't bill for football games.
We've always, we've always billed, even when we run markets, we've billed for...
Really?
Yeah, just because we've always done something, I'm not sure, I, I don't, I don't think we should, I mean, is it an extra crew we have out there?
Yes, we have off-duty crews go for football games, and this, these are off-duty crews, they're from...
How many?
The Marmerton massacre, I'll have one crew on Saturday, one crew on Sunday. And then, football games, I mean, we have Union Town, we have here.
Now, are that extra crews that goes to football games, or you're bringing them also?
Is there other things you do standby for?
Do you do Red Bull standby?
And do you charge for it?
And we charge for it.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I, I have always, I mean, I've sat here and said it, I'm, treat one, one way, you gotta treat them all that way. So, I'm, I'm not gonna change my mind for this, so... My opinion is if we're gonna charge for everybody, we, we do one or the other, we either charge everybody, or we don't. When is it?
It's my opinion that we shouldn't charge any of them. As public events, that we provide a service to help the citizens of Fort Scott, Union Town, Bourbon County, and, you know, it's, it's for the kids at the games. It's, the massacre is gonna bring hundreds and hundreds of people, Fort Scott Bourbon County motels, restaurants, and Mr. Halls in that group does a wonderful job, and I don't know anything about Red Bull, but I'm sure it's probably a great event also, but...
It's not, like, it's only open to the public one day. Yeah, it's a, it's a press.
So, I guess Frank could be in here asking for a donation to help pay for it from us, I don't think we would agree with it, but... So, I agree with Clifton, what we do for one, we should do for all, but I don't think we should charge any of them, so, that simple on my part, so... Well, but, that's not really yes or no answer for you. So...
No, it's not.
I would like to have, not charge them this time, and that would give us a year to talk to Frank, and help maybe do some fundraisers, or something to help pay. Give him an opportunity to think about it for 12 months, and us, us work on 12 months, yeah.
Just, just, such short notice.
Yeah.
They do what we've done in the past, but we need to readdress it.
Yes, I agree.
What was the charge?
It's typically $75 an hour.
Okay, I'll donate two hours.
So, well, we're gonna do it for free. So...
So, I think we've, we agreed to go ahead and donate it this year, then we'll go to the drawing board.
And then we'll look at all of it.
Yeah, look at it all, it's a package, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Clifton. Justin Meeks.
Good evening, sir. I'm good. I, I have some apprehension about the time request, I don't want to come back in and go back in, that kind of thing, but I do have a couple topics that deal with contracts, two that deal with potential litigation, and I need to update you on some other legal, legalese with some potential contracts in the future. So, I don't know how much information you want. I, 10 minutes, I was thinking a half hour, but we don't need to go that long, I'll talk fast, and if you need to come back in, that's attorney-client privilege.
Make a motion to go on to executive session, case A 75-4319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The possible litigation, I think, he said, two commissioners, and Justin Meeks will return here at 6:17.
I second that motion, any discussion, all in favor, aye.
Nope.
I second that motion, any discussion, all in favor, aye. Commission comments? I don't have anything.
I don't think, I, I'm gonna have to say, I'm have to. It's not all about you, okay? Dealt with plenty of people that said that, and that was absolutely, I, I truly, truly want you to understand that that was absolutely not directed at you at all. I truly want you to think that.
I did put the onus on you to communicate my contact information to her, because I told her we had a conversation.
Yeah, but there was, what I said had nothing, honestly, truly was not directed at you at all, so, that's all. I will, I will.
I do have one comment. We have Fort Scott Community College Baseball here tomorrow afternoon, and we got Fort Scott Tiger Football here Friday night. Go Tigers, go Greyhounds. Yeah, you're going on that nice cruise, aren't you? Poor guy. Anything else, Clifton, anything?
I don't got any. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion, any discussion, all in favor, aye. Meeting adjourned.
Listen, where does your water come from?
Mount City. Mount City, northern, multiple, I mean, you took a very, very large chunk, comes from Mount City.
Thank you. How's the coaching going? You doing volleyball now, and you go back to softball? Yeah, keep you busy. Shoot anyways. Yep, we gotta clear this off.